Work session upstairs and ran over just a touch here, so we're getting our meeting started just a little bit late. As Director Bennerott mentioned, people are watching us on television or on edinaamn.gov, live meetings, or on facebook.com. We've been doing these meetings in a hybrid fashion since COVID and have continued to provide the opportunity for people to watch this remote and participate on a remote basis. So if you look at the screen, they're going to put that number up again for community comment, and that's all we have this evening is one opportunity to talk to the council. And get that number up there, would you please? And so folks, get ready because this comes up relatively quickly in the agenda. If you have something you want to address with the council, it's a concern of yours that's not on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing, you're welcome to come up. You'll have three minutes, as Director Bennerott indicated. You'll get a yellow light when you've got about 30 seconds to go on the podium, and then you should be thinking about wrapping up your comments right at about the three-minute mark. So having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting of the City Council to order this Tuesday, July 16, 2024, and ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Houghlin?
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And we have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone on the council or on the staff that wishes to modify the agenda in any form or fashion? All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the adoption of the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Now we are at community comment, and we're first going to turn to some of our fellow residents that are in the audience. And so folks that are watching from home, if you want to participate in community comment, your opportunity will come up shortly here, but let's first go to folks in our community here that are with us that may want to comment on something that's important for them. Good evening. The volume is not very good on that.
One?
Derek, it's coming up now.
Hello. Okay. Janie Weston, 6136 Brookview Avenue, Edina. What I felt I really need to address tonight is something that concerns me whenever there's a proposed development project within Edina's city boundaries but is not within the Edina School District when it's in a neighboring school district. Hopkins is one of them, and Richfield is the other. We've had the Lincoln Drive by 169 project proposal that would have created quite a bit of housing, but that's in the Hopkins School District. The other that is much more recent is the Macy's Furniture Store site that's still not completely finalized yet, but that is within the Richfield School District boundary. The Macy's project in particular would have 523 apartments, 10% of them being affordable housing, which would be 52 units. There is a playground plan for that. There will be children. They will be within the Richfield School District. If TIF financing is awarded for this project, the city, the school district of Richfield, will not get the funding help that they need for 25 years, however long that TIF lasts, that would help them fund perhaps two, three, four more classrooms worth of kids in their district. And to the best of my knowledge, there is no requirement that the city of Edina, when a proposal like this is on, you know, comes across a threshold in the planning department, that they must notify the neighboring school districts, not just the neighboring city, but the neighboring school district. This is only fair for keeping the kids that will be living in Edina not getting short-changed because they're in another school district. I think there should be a requirement in the packet of information prepared for you to make decisions on, that there should be a school district map in there if this is outside Edina's school district boundaries. And there should be required, not should, there must be required notification of neighboring school districts. If Edina had students, if the tables were reversed, people in Edina would be up in arms about this. This is only fair to the kids that will be living in Edina but not attending Edina schools. I have a sister that was a fourth-grade teacher in Richfield Schools. They needed every penny they could get. She had her hands full. This is not okay for this to be neglected. And as far as I know, there's been no notification to the neighboring school districts when proposals like this come across your threshold. So please, this must be required.
Thank you, Ms. Weston.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Bill Hay, 5275 Grandview Square, Unit 3103, has been my residence for almost 17 years, during which time there has been considerable improvement in the overall Grandview District, starting with Avidore, which replaced the Edina School Bus Depot and has led to a very attractive path sidewalk leading up to Jerry's, which has upped its game with a remodel and Starbucks and a better dining situation. Jerry's Hardware is next properly located next to Jerry's Grocery. We have a Walgreens where there used to be a shop regripping golf clubs. Across Vernon, the townhouses, the White Townhouse Row, looks good to me, as does Caribou. Coming in this direction, I understand that the building on stilts has escaped demolition for the time being, and the traffic roundabouts are functioning very well. I was kind of skeptical about the double roundabout, but I have traversed it a number of times without a problem, and it is really enhancing the flow of traffic. One problem remains to be resolved, and that is the 3.3 acres of unattractive property, which has for 14 years been known as the former public work site. During these 14 years, council members have come and gone. I believe the mayor has been the only constant, and there have been a number of plans that have not come to fruition. Several years ago, one of your former colleagues who I came to know and admire, Kevin Staunton, declared rather emphatically that this should be an exciting place for people of Edina to come together. And then you came up with a senior co-op and a 347-seat restaurant. And I thought, wow, what could be more exciting than a senior co-op? So now you're back to go. You have a blank slate, and I know it's presumptuous, but I'm here to help you with that. I would suggest that you give your park and recreation department the task of converting this, transforming this into a beautiful little pocket park with nice landscaping, of course, maybe a fountain, four pickleball courts. Pickleball has become wildly popular, and I think it will remain so. And as far as a restaurant, I don't think you need to have a big prestigious restaurant. I think something like maybe a Dairy Queen or the Bread and Pickle at Lake Harriet would work very well. As was said in Field of Dreams, if you build it, they will come. People will come on foot, people will come on bikes. You would need a lot of bike racks. They should not be just generic bike racks, but kind of sculptural bike racks. So, there you go. One more thought. Despite the inability to get this done in 14 years, I have observed that the Edina, Edina is exceptionally well governed and well managed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hay. Anyone else wish to speak with the council this evening on a matter of concern to them that's in the audience? All right, let's go to the virtual world and see if we have anybody that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them.
I don't have anyone online tonight.
Oh, yeah, the smile threw me off. I thought you were excited that you had somebody on the line.
I'm trying to maintain a positive attitude.
Yeah, I like that. So our practice is that if there have been community comments at the prior meeting, they get addressed on our website by Friday of that week, but then the city manager also responds to those committee comments that were made at the prior meeting. And I'll turn now to Manager Neil to see if he has any comments with respect to comments that may have been made at the prior city council meeting, which now was about a month ago.
It is, and we did not have any community comment at that meeting, so there's nothing to address tonight.
Very good. One thing I would, Manager Neil, I think Ms. Weston raised this notion of requiring notification of adjoining school districts when there's a project in our town that might be in our school district. I don't know if it's a requirement, but our practice has always been that we notified in the South Hill District, the Richfield School District, when we had a land development project going on, regardless of what type of a project it was. And I think, I don't know if it's a requirement by law, but it has been something that we've done by practice. I concur on that.
We do, and we typically do that, you know, around the final approval date so that they can have a sense of, a better sense of when construction might begin and what the actual size is, how many, it makes a difference to them, not just that there's going to be 523 new apartments, but are they 523 new three-bedroom apartments or single bedroom apartments? That makes a big difference for how schools would estimate the impact of this. But it's a good idea, and we can formalize that. That's good.
And Mr. Kendall, remember, Rissler has a question too, but I want to go to Mr., our city attorney. With a project in the South Hill District being potentially in the Richfield School District, in the city boundary of Edina, when it comes time, if there were TIFs that were requested, wouldn't that adjoining school district have the ability to comment on whether or not they would like to see us use TIF? Regardless, so do we contact them or not?
Yes, they would, Mayor.
Rissler.
Regarding the TIF issue, my understanding is it's the school board and not the district that gets to weigh in on that. I could be mistaken on that, but that was what I thought was the case. The other thing is, I think, TIF comes in later after a project has been approved, and my understanding is, the concern is, the project is underway, it gets going, and so even early on, if there's a possibility of TIF being something that's going to come into play, the school board or whatever body makes that call should be notified.
Well, yeah, we always notify our own school board, of course, if it's in play, but we've also had the practice of notifying those adjacent districts as well. All right, so let's go next to the consent agenda. There's one item that Member Rissler requested. Comment?
Yeah, I'm going to take H.
H?
Yeah.
Okay. With respect to the items on the consent agenda, they'll be handled in a single motion unless any city council member wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion. And Member Jackson would like to remove Item 6H. Member Rissler would like to remove Item 6N from the consent agenda. With, any other council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? With the exception of 6H and 6N, is there a motion to approve the balance of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
So moved.
All right. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda with the exception of Items 6H and 6N. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Then let's turn to 6H, which is the Traffic Safety Report of May 28, 2024. And I'm going to turn now to Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in this traffic safety report, I didn't see any mention of the request to limit parking on Beard during the soccer games. And the soccer season's almost over, so it really, for that, you know, neighborhood summer hockey, or soccer program. So I wanted to know if we were going to see anything on that or not. I think the last communication I got was, well, they're going to study it, but spend another summer of soccer and dangerous streets. So I was asking, you know, what's the status on that?
I think City Engineer Milner can speak to that directly.
Okay, great.
Good evening.
Good evening. I didn't see you.
Thanks for the questions. So our Traffic Safety Committee has reviewed that request, and as practice, now that goes to the ETC before it comes back to you. So this has been an issue for many years. It's not going to get addressed next week, but it's going through the normal process of a traffic safety request.
Okay, so it's still moving forward?
In process, yeah.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. With that, I'll move.
Okay.
Item 6H.
All right. Member Jackson moves the adoption of the Traffic Safety Report, which is Item 6H.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of that Traffic Safety Report. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adopting the Traffic Safety Report of May 28, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Traffic Safety Report is adopted. And now, this is an interesting item, too, that Member Rissler wanted to pull. We've been working on it for several years before she was on the council, but 6N deals with a memorandum of agreement for the Wooddale Avenue Bridge, and it involves the bridge right down by the Episcopal Church and the Country Club. And you've got some questions, I think, about that.
Not questions, but just wanted to underscore all of the work that has gone into this and how it has involved the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office, as well as Edina's Heritage Preservation Commission. And I know this is a bridge that a lot of people in Edina really care about, and so just wanted to note that this is on our agenda today. It's moving forward, but there has been so much care and consideration. And if you want to know more, you can click on the link that is in the packet for tonight, and I believe it's a 23-page document that goes over so many things that are being considered as this project gets underway. And it will result in a safer pathway for pedestrians and bikers. And so I just was really impressed with all of the effort that went into it and wanted to call it out.
Very good. And care to move it as well?
I would love to move it.
The adoption of it, all right.
So moving item N for approval.
Second.
All right. Member Rissler moves the adoption of Item 6N, which is the approval of the memorandum of agreement for the Wooddale Avenue Bridge. Member Pierce seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Item 6N, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And that completes our work on the consent portion of the agenda. And now we're going to move on to special recognitions and presentations. Through this last half of the school year, we've been trying to recognize different organizations at the high school and individuals, teams, whether they be sports teams or robotics teams, you know, there's just a variety of kids over there, young people that have been so successful on the things that they've been doing. And so tonight, we've got a couple of pieces of recognition that we're going to do, and one is the Edina High School Pep Band, and they've got quite an interesting story to tell, and in fact, made the NBC nightly news during the wintertime, actually after the Frozen Four, I think it was, that they were on national television with their story. And I think we should hear their story here tonight and ask them to come up, if you would, members of the pep band and your director and whoever you've got with you, and come up and identify yourselves. And we're going to get a photo at the end, but I think we'll use one of those side microphones and tell the story, both of being the pep band, I think, for our high school team, and both high school teams won the state championship in hockey, and then what happened with the University of Denver.
Sure, yeah. I'm Andy Richter. I'm one of the band directors at Edina High School.
Andy, thanks for being with us.
Yeah, thank you. Shall we introduce the members of the band, or do you want me to tell the story?
Yeah, so I think we should have them.
Okay.
Introduce themselves.
My name is Oscar Sanchez-Crischinson. I just graduated this year, and I play the trumpet.
My name is Autumn Burkholdt. I'm going to be a junior, and I play the trumpet.
My name is Mohar Jain, just graduated, and I play tenor sax.
I'm Alex Lundgren. I also just graduated, and I play French horn.
I'm Josie Gerlock. I also graduated, and I played the quads.
I'm Abby Richter, and I also just graduated, and I play French horn.
I'm Michael Howard. I'm going to be a senior, and I play the trumpet.
I'm Wilson Schaefer. I'm going to be a senior, and I play the tenor saxophone.
Good. Thanks, you guys, for introducing yourselves. And Andy, how many total in the pep band?
We had 24 students in the pep band, and the story is kind of interesting where the Denver University's athletic director knows Troy Stein. He used to be the athletic director up at Duluth. And so when they were sending their hockey team to the Frozen Four, they didn't have a pep band to send to go support the team. And so he was pulling a favor for Troy Stein, saying, hey, could you ask your pep band? I see you've had some success. The pep band has accompanied both the boys' and the girls' hockey team, and we're undefeated at the Excel Center. So, yeah. And then I thought, sure, let's give it a try. And we were able to get a number of students to join in, and we became a college pep band. And they had some great success. They won their first game, which brought them to the championship game, and then we remain undefeated at the Excel Center this year.
The only undefeated pep band?
Yes, we went 8-0 this year at the Excel Center, yeah.
I'm going to have the council come down, too, Andy. Let's line up here by the diaphragm. Some of you want to hang on to Torgar at a hard time when he comes up, you can certainly do that.
Okay, let's really switch together and maybe make a couple of rows.
Two rows?
I don't think you have to switch. Just make notes between people. All right, here we go. Allow James to get in a little bit more. All right, here we go. I'm going to do a couple more so I have one for social dialect. All right. And then we have car coasters for you, and the message that goes with them is wherever you travel, know your hometown is proud of you.
Thank you. Bookends, bookends.
Well, Torgar, I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but I think you're the first one we've individually singled out, so to speak, to, and why don't you come up to the side podium here, and so folks can see you both here at the meeting and at home on television. We're going to let you talk in just a minute about your experience, but you've been doing such a great job. I really enjoyed, what was it, about three, four weeks ago now, visiting with you and your brother out at the practice green, I think it was right before the state high school tournament.
Yeah.
And then you won the state high school individual tournament. And what were you, nine under or par or something like that?
Yes, sir, I was.
All right. And so tell us a little bit about that experience, and what's next for you this summer?
Yeah, well, thank you for having me, first off. I'm just really grateful to have been in this position to have succeeded. We didn't make it as a team, unfortunately, after we've won it the last couple of years, so that was a little disappointing, but I'm just really happy and proud to be Hornet and be able to win for us individually, so that was pretty exciting.
And then this summer, your schedule?
Yeah, right now I'm in the Minnesota State Am, which ends tomorrow, and then later regional tournaments up in Detroit Lakes. And, yeah, I mean, not too busy.
When I saw Torgar and his brother out at Braemar, I said, what you guys got going on this summer? And they talked about golf tournaments, and then it was also living at the lake. And they both looked at me and said, we got a good life.
Yeah, we do.
And they've got a good life. Thank you. Bring your parents up with you. And... So these are Torgar's parents, Jeff and Ali O. And he's a past president of the New Dorrie, and just like Jeff and Bennerott was. And so here we are. You guys want to come up, too, if all you members want? We'll be moving to Jersey tomorrow. I have a drink at City Hall. Yeah, I can't believe what you look like at mom.
And for social. Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us.
Events like this, this recognition of the pep band and Torgar and other teams that have come through here, it's really been a nice way to spend part of the city council meeting every few weeks. And it seems like there's no end to the recognition we can give to the kids in our community. So it's really a special, special place in a wonderful school district. So we've got a couple other things to do in this portion of the agenda, and our Assistant City Manager Ari Lenz has an introduction that she wants to make. And our assistant city manager, Ari Lenz, has an introduction that she wants to make. And we'll turn to her now to introduce somebody that's a relatively new member of our staff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have the pleasure tonight of welcoming Thomas Brooks. I'm going to have Thomas come on up and give a little bit about his background. But in the short amount of time that Thomas has been here, I found him to be quite thoughtful. And I think he's going to make a huge impact here in Edina. So welcome, Thomas.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. I know I've had an opportunity to meet you all individually. But formally, it's really great to be here. And I'm honored to have the opportunity to follow up the pep band and a golf champion. I am most recently coming to you from the state of Minnesota as Director of Enterprise, Equity, and Inclusion. And prior to that, had an opportunity to be the City of Roseville's first Equity and Inclusion Manager. So with that, I really miss local government and couldn't be more excited to be here in Edina. Although I live on the other side of town in Brooklyn Park, I do and have spent quite a bit of time in the city on a daily basis. So looking forward to getting in and helping out with staff, yourselves, and community as much as possible as it relates to our strategic goals for inclusion and equity throughout the city.
Yeah, well, welcome, Mr. Brooks. Today, we're really pleased to have you here. Thank you. And one other introduction you wanted to make as well.
Sure, I'll introduce her. I want to introduce you tonight to Zoe Johnson. Zoe is our newest city management fellow. And as she approaches and prepares to speak to you tonight, I just want to let you, she started on July 8th, so she's been here for a little over a week. And we wanted her to come tonight because she will have interaction with council. Just to give you a brief introduction of who she is and why she's here.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. I'm Zoe Johnson. Like Scott so kindly introduced me. I'm originally from the Ada, Minnesota area. Just recently did a year in Kansas at KU there to get my MPA. So I'm very happy to be back in my home state. I love it here, and I never want to leave again. I originally did my first stint in local government as a city manager's intern in the city of Morehead, Minnesota. Fell in love with local government after that and decided that I wanted to go to school for it extra on top of my bachelor's, which was a very different choice for me. But I loved it and wanted to continue back here after meeting with Jillian, the past city management fellow, excuse me. And so just chatted with her a little bit about the structure of the fellowship and about how the team works together with the community and everyone else in the region, and just knew it was the place I wanted to be. So I went into the fellowship at, excuse me, the fellowship at KU, knowing that I wanted to continue my time in local government here at the City of Edina's fellowship. So I'm very excited to be working with you all and everyone in the city. But thank you all. Happy to be here.
Happy to have you here. We look forward to working with you. So, all right, let's move on then to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And the first matter there is Resolution 2024-48, which we have to do when we have donations to the City of Edina. We have to accept those donations with a super majority of the council voting. And so is there anyone who cares to move the adoption of Resolution 2024-48?
So moved.
Okay.
Member Pierce moves, and Member Jackson seconds the adoption of Resolution 2024-48, which accepts donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? Resolution 2024-48 is adopted. In this reporting period, we had gifts to the Park and Rec Department from Carol Miller and Barb Jerich, Karen Dahl, Barbara Gabler, Susan Brun, Peggy Stevens. There was a tree at Bretisson Park that they all cooperated in sponsoring. And the Police Department has a matter that they had to receive a donation on as well, and that is flock cameras for the Rolling Green neighborhood. So those will all be posted on the website. Next, we have, these are always interesting parts of city council meetings, when we have an award of the sale of general obligation bonds. And Nick Anhut, our financial advisor from Ellers and Associates, our public finance advisor, and Pa Tao, our finance director, are both here this evening to talk about the sale of the general obligation bonds, what they were for, and then also the purchasers of those bonds and the rates of interest that will be paid on those bonds. So welcome.
Good evening. So tonight with us, we have Resolution 2024-46, which Nick from Ellers will be discussing in addition to what that bond sale, how the bids come out. So welcome, Nick.
Thank you, Pa. Mayor, members of the council, Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates. And here with some exciting news, the city authorized the placement of $32 million of general obligation bonds that were intended to fund a variety of different projects that are either completed or underway here at the city this year. Street reconstruction to be repaid by special assessments from the properties benefiting from those improvements, sanitary and stormwater sewer, infrastructure improvements, construction costs related to the fire station project that is underway here in the city, as well as the construction that was mentioned around this vicinity, the roadway improvements within the Eden Wilson Tiff District, the roundabouts and other improvements that are going on right now. Those were all packaged together in one offering of general obligation bonds. These would be tax-exempt bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the City of Edina. Since the council authorized this sale back in the beginning of June, we've gone to work verifying the various funding costs and preliminary repayment schedules, circulated offering documents out to the marketplace to solicit bids on the city's behalf. And we did also receive affirmations from both Moody's and Standard and Poor's related to the city's AAA credit rating. That is the highest credit rating that can be bestowed upon a municipality, a sovereign nation, a business, or any type of entity that's repaying debt. Basically affirms that the City of Edina is a very low-risk proposition in terms of an investment in the form of its bonds and very unlikely to default. And that high credit rating leads to lower interest rates and the best, most flexible terms of financing that the city can muster. And so the city has maintained that status since the year 2000 with Moody's and 2003 with Standard and Poor's. And all signs from those analysts and the agencies they represent are that's going to continue going forward in the future. So that was good and welcome news, especially for this sale. And because of that, we received, I think, I think the second-most bids that I've seen in the 12-so years that I've been working with the city on its financings. But we got 11 bids for the purchase of these bonds from a variety of different firms across the country and all types of underwriting desks, both East Coast, West Coast, and then even here, Piper Sandler in Minneapolis. But the winning bid came from UBS Financial out of New York at an indicated rate of 3.6895%. The bids varied from 3.7 all the way up to 3.84. So a .15 percentage point difference between the low and the high bid, which sounds like a very, very low amount. But when you're talking about $32 millions, this results in hundreds, if not a million, in interest costs that can be saved from the low bid from UBS. So very welcome bids, very competitive, very tight grouping, as you see, that most of the bids came in within just a fraction of a percentage point within one another, which indicates that there's some consensus in the larger marketplace that this is where that financing needed to be. With the UBS proposal, we're able to actually fine-tune the amount of borrowing and resize the principal amount to $30,735,000. So that will be the final principal amount, and that's the amount that is included within a revised resolution that was provided from your bond attorneys at Dorsey and Whitney. That amount is still going to fund the $32 million worth of projects that we intended. But it does account for a reduction in the issuance costs that were anticipated for this financing, as well as the winning bid's reoffering premium of about $2.2 million. That reoffering premium would have resulted in excess proceeds that we don't necessarily need for this year's project. And we don't want to sit on money and pay interest on it at the same time. And so we're able to, within the terms of the sale, have the final say on adjusting the sizing. And so we fine-tuned that amount so we were borrowing only what's necessary to construct the projects that we're talking about. Again, the amounts are shown on the slide as far as the various components and all the different projects I mentioned in the introduction. But with that, a final true interest cost calculation of 3.69. These bonds are actually going to be paid off over a term of 30 years. The fire station is a very large sum and a tax levy associated with that. And so that 3.69% interest rate on a 30-year financing is phenomenal. It's a very, very low cost of borrowing, especially in today's marketplace where we've seen elevated interest rates for the last year and a half. So this was a very good result, and it blew our estimates, that we're admittedly conservative, out of the water. So the final consideration from the council is a revised resolution. As I mentioned, your bond attorneys have updated that. It's in the amount of $30,735,000 and would award the sale of the bonds to UBS Financial Services based on their low bid proposal that was given to the city. It would lock in the proposed rates and terms, finalize the repayment schedules, and then we would be targeting a closing date of August 1st, which is when the funds will actually be wired into the city's accounts to reimburse costs for the money you've already spent on some of these projects, as well as to continue to fund the construction as they are completed over the course of this next year and a half. And so with that said, I'll be certainly standing by for any questions, but we certainly recommend the council do take action to approve the sale of bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Standby here. Mr. Anhut, council members have questions, comments? Yeah, thanks. I think we ran into each other earlier out in the hallway when we were talking about the interest rate, the final calculated true interest cost, I guess about 3.69%. You said that was one of the lowest you'd seen this year, I think amongst the cities in our region that are going out and borrowing money to do certain things.
Especially for the 30-year repayment term. The longer repayment term, usually you see a higher interest rate associated with that. So that was definitely a welcome sign for that length of a financing.
Does anyone in the council care to move the adoption of Resolution 2024-46, which authorizes the issuance, awarding sale, prescribing the form and details, providing for the payment of $30,735,000 in general obligation bond Series 2024A to UBS Financial Services at the final calculated true interest cost of 3.69%?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the motion stated. Did we cover everything in that motion? That you needed to cover?
Absolutely.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Resolution's adopted. Thank you for your continuing good work on behalf of the City of Edina. It's a pleasure working with you. You always do such a superior job for our community and our public finance endeavors.
Appreciate it.
All right. Now, in this part of the agenda, we have a sketch plan review, which we do from time to time with proposed land use or possible land use projects. And I think for folks that may be in the audience or watching at home, sketch plan review is basically somebody that has an idea on a particular land use project can come in. We used to say you could come in with an idea on the back of a napkin, and we'll take a look at it and sketch plan. It's not meant for public hearing. It's meant to give advice, both at the Planning Commission level and the city council level, about a particular idea and a particular site. And that developer then takes that feedback and goes back and huddles with their team and decides whether they want to proceed and file for preliminary approval. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, based on the feedback that they get. So the matter we're going to hear about tonight, which is called Station Pizzeria, is going to be introduced by Kerry Teeger, Community Development Director. Then we're going to have a presentation by the group that's involved in Station Pizza and their architect as well. So I'll turn now to Director Teeger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, this is a site you're all familiar with. We've had a couple of redevelopment proposals on this site over the last couple of years. The first one was to expand the existing building and build a restaurant, expand and remodel. That was denied. There was then, within the last year, a proposal by Green Drop to do a donation collection center. That also was denied. The biggest issue that we've been struggling with on this one is that our comprehensive plan guides this site for medium-density residential. That designation has been in place for a couple of decades now. However, the site is zoned Plan Commercial District Four, which allows what the uses have been on the site over the years, a gas station and auto repair. So we've got this conflict between comprehensive plan and zoning. The proposal before you this evening is for, by Station Pizza. They're currently located in the city of Minnetonka. They have a restaurant there. This isn't a sit-down restaurant proposal. This is for takeout and delivery-only pizza. They would repave the site, install a fence along the north and west lot line, add landscaping for screening to the single-family homes to the north. A formal request would require a rezoning of the site from the PCD Four to PCD One that would allow a restaurant. That was the request the first time through with that restaurant. But again, that was a much larger building at that time. It also would require an amendment to the comprehensive plan to re-guide the site to some type of a neighborhood commercial designation. With that first request, you may recall, the proposal was to designate it in the comprehensive plan for neighborhood node. The site is only 16,000 square feet, doesn't really constitute a node, just really just one small parcel. So as we talked about with the Green Drop proposal, maybe it's a new land use designation. But nonetheless, it needs to be re-guided commercial in order to accommodate the use. Some of the issues that we would ask the council to comment on as part of your discussion is the proposed land use appropriate for the site? Should the comprehensive plan be amended for commercial uses? And is PCD One that appropriate zoning district? So with that, I will introduce the architect, Jesse Hamer, hope I pronounced that right, and Jake Schaefer from Station Pizza, and they'll go through more of the detail of the project.
Thank you, Director Teeger. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is, as you said, Jesse Hamer. I'm with Momentum Design Group and the architect working with Jake on his proposed pizzeria. So the project on Vernon Avenue, we got the site that we're looking at here, we're looking for an adaptive reuse of the existing facility. Very specifically, we're not expanding the size of the building. We would simply be remodeling, updating, cleaning it up, and making it appropriate for the pizzeria use that we're proposing. That use would be a drive-through, sorry, a drive pickup and delivery only. It is not meant for a larger sort of restaurant, which have a lot of parking requirements, et cetera. The site's just not really large enough to handle something like that, in our opinion. We, as mentioned, are suggesting, proposing fencing and screening added along both the north and west sides, repaving of the parking lot. We would be, obviously, this is a sketch plan. This is an idea. It's a concept. There's a lot of work that would need to be done, to be looked at. We've worked with civil engineers to figure out the best possible sort of interaction with the curb cuts, that sort of thing with Vernon Avenue. We'll locate the bicycle parking and the trash areas and then get all that kind of sorted out. I think, we think it's a very good fit for sort of what we need in terms of the pizzeria station, but it also, I think, makes a good fit for this particular location in this neighborhood. It's going to be close by. People can walk, people can bike to their homes. We had a number of, we had some really good conversation with the Planning Commission, and some ideas sort of came out of that that I think we're willing to look at and we think are good ideas. Some things from as simple as reorienting the direction of travel for cars through the parking lot from a counterclockwise motion to a clockwise motion, just kind of makes things a little bit easier and cleaner for access. But like I said, we'll work with civil engineers to figure out those details. And then the inclusion of extending the sidewalk, apparently along Vernon there, there's a sidewalk along most of that road, but in this block it's missing. And so they wanted to get that in there as well. Why don't we have a problem with that at all? The third item that they suggested was possibly shifting the fence on the north side back to the side back to the property line. So we in our proposal pulled away from it. The existing fence is on the property line right now. All the parking runs up, right up next to it. We pulled it back 10 feet in order to get that additional screening in there. The suggestion was made that they would be fine with us pushing that screening and landscaping onto the right-of-way pursuant to the requirements of the right-of-way and the city's rules on those. But in order to free up some space on the south side of the fence to possibly add a little bit more green space, possibly add a small seating area, not a dining area, not a place that we would actually be serving pizza or anything like that, but just a small little seating area that would be an amenity for the neighborhood, for the, along the added sidewalk. Or, yeah, or just some additional green space, some additional landscaping space. It was one of the ideas that they suggested. So, yeah, I think, as Carrie mentioned, we're just kind of here to kind of hear your thoughts on the appropriateness of our proposal. And, yeah, we're just kind of looking for a path forward.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Hamer. Let me ask, did Mr. Schaefer want to comment at all, anything?
No, I'm, is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here for questions that you guys might have.
Okay. All right. So it's, when we look at the adaptive potential reuse and then the PCD 1, you wanted a little bit of conversation around the fact that it's guided for medium-density residential and it's PCD 4 now, but go to PCD 1 opens it up not only for pizza station, pizzeria station, but downstream, it could be other things as well.
Correct. It would be any land use that would be allowed in the PCD 1 zoning district would be allowed then on the site.
Can you give us some examples of some of those things? I know you've given us a long list, but...
Yeah, it's more the somewhat smaller scale retail. As you know, our zoning ordinance is unique in that we have a long list of uses. That's one of the things we're looking at in our zoning audit to tighten that up. Some of the, some of the listed uses, you just don't see much of anymore, but it's generally smaller retail-type uses.
Coffee shops and that nature.
Depending if it has a drive-through or not.
I do, whoops. The planning commission did have some concerns about whether the proposed use actually makes sense as a PCD 1 type of use. And in fact, a couple of commissioners noted that they thought it would be more appropriate in more of an industrial kind of zoning because it is producing pizza in a way, you know, to take out. It's not a sit-down restaurant. And it was likened more to an industrial kitchen, I think was one of the terms that was used. So I am concerned about the idea of rezoning to PCD 1 for that purpose, but I do have other concerns as well. I don't know.
Do you want to address any of those with the applicant, or are they more legal?
They're more zoning and...
Zoning and legal in nature?
And code. Yeah, right.
Would you care to, remember Pierce?
I can start. So I think this is a really challenging project. When I look at it, I actually think it makes sense to have a quick serve, kind of a small restaurant there. And I think about, I always say this wrong, Pastory...
It's Pastory Margot.
Margot. Yeah. They are bakery, right? They're open, they're hours, like they're open from 7:00 to 2:00, and then they're open from 8:00 to 12:00 on Saturday, and they're not open on Sunday and Monday. Right? And so it's very small seating in there. People go, I go, get a muffin, get some coffee or whatever. I'll have a meeting there, and that's it. And so I kind of think the original restaurant we looked at was a full-service restaurant. I think their original proposal, they might have had a rooftop, there is a bar there. So it was, it was quite extensive when I think about restaurants. And so I kind of think it makes sense to have something like this, to me, fits there. But I'm challenged with if it would ever get approved. And so I think as a council, like I think we have to really face into some of the challenges around this. One question I would have, if it's guided as residential in the comp plan, we've not, I've not seen any proposal for residential in that space, but yet it's guided for that. And so I, one of the questions is, why is that? And I'm not really looking for us to say, well, that's to the discretion of the developer. I'm asking more, is there something related to how, as a city, we're managing these codes and communicating that's actually guiding these types of projects to come forward? So that's the first question I have. And do you want to address that?
Yeah, I can take a shot at that. So it was, this has been the designation in the comprehensive plan for at least the last two comprehensive plans. So it was decided at that time that the future use of this site should be residential, similar to the density that's straight to the west. When that change was made, the Met Council didn't require rectifying or, you know, having the zoning and the comprehensive plan match. They do now. So we're at a point where we should decide one way or the other. If we were to proactively rezone the site for a residential use, then the existing use on the property would be considered non-conforming and they could do auto repair.
Thank you for that. And so when I, when I think about this, it's, it'd be the same to me as if I asked everybody up here to sketch out a house. I want a creative house that I'm thinking of building someplace. If I asked everybody for that, everybody would draw one, but I'd probably only use one or two of them because the scope is too big. And so I feel like we've got people that are coming up with great ideas, they're expending a lot of energy and resources around these ideas, but I'm not sure that this is a use that we actually would prefer there as a city. So the opposite would be as if I said, hey, I'm trying to build a two-story house, three bedrooms, and then everybody draws a house. I'm going to, every house that's drawn now is within the range of ideas of something that I think I could do, that I would want. And that's what I think we need for this, this site at some point. We really need to frame and solidify, this is a great idea, I think it's, quick serve works there. But if that's not what we want, I feel like it's unfair to the community to keep this wide scope. And it certainly is unfair for people that are spending money bringing forward ideas that may or may not, or I guess I should say, may have a lower chance of getting approved. So that's the one, the first thing I wanted to say. In terms of the project itself, when I listened to the planning commission, one of the other things that they talked about, I believe Commissioner Miranda talked about this for sure, the traffic on Vernon. I remember him using the example of cycling down Vernon, and then you've got this commercial establishment kind of in the middle there and people coming and going. And I think the way he asked the question, would you feel safer if you were riding a bike or cycling along that side of Vernon? And so I tee this up with the creative example that I gave before because I actually don't think that that's an issue. I think what we end up doing is, we look at all these ancillary potential issues and problems, and I think we kind of project those onto whatever the project is. And so we had, we said the same thing about the donation center. Traffic on Vernon, you know, trucks pulling in and out, cars coming in and dropping off. And we know that that would have been, there would have been fewer vehicles for that purpose than there would have been for a restaurant. And so we live in a country where we are largely law-abiding citizens. And so if this establishment is there, I just don't believe that there's going to be traffic issues. And so to me, it really warrants us as a city to just decide, how do we want to guide this? And then set off that trajectory is what, that's my feedback for what I think we need to do as a group. In terms of your project, I think it's a, I think it's a great opportunity to have something there that might be used and leveraged by the community. I live in Highlands. I walk through there. We prefer Gina Marias to, but we may, we may love Station. Who knows? Then I don't have to drive to Eden Prairie anymore or use the new one in Eden Prairie. So I think there's an opportunity for this to be in amenity for the community. And maybe the last thing I'll say, when we looked at the first restaurant, we talked about the fact that there's no commercial node there. And at one point, we were talking about doing like a small area plan to kind of figure out how we could bring some services to that area. But to your point, this is just a tiny plot of land. So if we were to do that, we would have to have, we would have to extend that somehow to be able to bring a more commercial-type node to that area. So that's, that really is all the feedback I have for now.
Yeah, thank you. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to do granular and I'm going to do big picture. So just real briefly, on your proposal, I don't like the idea of planting trees in the right-of-way. That right-of-way is there for a lot of reasons, for street reconstruction and stuff like that. So if this were to go forward, no picnic tables, keep the setback the way it's designed. I do want to say for the general public, there's been a big, I've got a number of questions about whether we're going to be having bus rapid transit or something like that on Vernon. That is not an issue. It's, we talked about getting the bus line back, but no bus rapid transit, which isn't for you guys, but I wanted to make that perfectly clear that we just want to get the 46 bus back. We're not looking at anything fancy there. So the picnic table, the, so this is a question for you, Mr. Teague. With the fence, did I read incorrectly that that was a requirement to have the fence? Or is that something that our applicant has offered up?
It's something they've offered up.
Okay, so it's not required to be there, but they're being, offering to be good neighbors and put the fence up, okay? And I do like that. And repurposing is good. So the other question, so that's, that's the micro. So you've got a good idea here, if we can make it work. I wouldn't put the picnic table in and the, however the traffic flow is safest is the best way. So then we've got the macro picture. And once again, we've got this funny little piece of land adjacent to single-family neighborhood condominiums, people who really enjoy a very quiet street. And if it were just this project and that we could protect it and keep it there, it's really kind of a brilliant use of a very weird piece of land. I'm a little concerned about kind of spot zoning, but it's really conforming zoning that we're talking about. And, you know, in the future, what would come there? And so I have another zoning question, and that is, with a different type of use, let's say we want to put a hair salon in there, would the parking be much different in what's required than a drive-through restaurant and the setbacks and things like that? How much would that change?
Yeah, restaurant would be different. It's one parking stall per 100 square feet. Retail is more that general, so it would be fewer parking stalls with a beauty salon.
And so if we're looking at some of the other required use or allowed uses, the parking would probably be less than what's proposed here. And I think that they're proposing 21 parking spaces and what's required is 12. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the parking wouldn't change dramatically if, over time, this position, or this business morphed into something different, unless they came and asked for a variance.
That's right. And it's really based on, because the building is so small, you recall with the restaurant, they were expanding up and they had some basement space and expanding out. So they were more than doubled the square footage, and that's where the parking requirement went up.
And then as far as setbacks and things go, if we, in the future, were to look at this, how, how much of a variant, or how much bigger could a building be without asking for any variances?
I don't think you could do any expansion of this building without the need for a variance.
Okay, so this is, this is pretty much it.
It is.
And it's non-conforming even as it is, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. So we're not, without further council action, it wouldn't get bigger?
Correct.
Okay. And then the variance is on the pyramid of discretion, is it the same level we're at now, or is it higher up?
It's, as what they would need now, it's on the low end where the city has complete discretion. It requires a comprehensive plan amendment, so it's a four-fifths vote of the city council.
And then if we were to approve that and in the future change the use, it would be a three-fifths vote.
Correct.
But the same level of discretion? Or would it be a higher, you know, we have less discretion on...
You would have less discretion.
Okay. And I remember one of the elements is caused by the piece of land. But if we had an existing business here, that was fine, you know, Kevin Keyes was fine, this might be fine, and another use came along, that wouldn't be a reason to grant a variance because the use changed. It'd have to be caused by the piece of land, right?
Correct. So let's say they, as an example, this got approved and it was re-zoned to PCD 1, the business goes away and a beauty salon wanted to go in there. As long as they had enough parking stalls, they could just move in as a permitted use.
Okay. But if they wanted to double the size of the building, then they'd come for a variance.
Correct.
And, but my question is, if they came for that variance, and this is goofy little triangular piece of land, could they say, hey, it's the piece of land that's forcing us to do this?
That would be one of the factors that we're considering, is the shape of the lot is unique and it has restrictive setbacks being on having two street frontages. But another factor is, is the use they're proposing, is that expansion reasonable given the gen, whatever the parking needs are? So there's more factors that could go into it?
I know, it's a multi-factor thing.
It is.
So those are my thoughts. It doesn't help you guys much, but as you probably have sensed, it's, you know, people who want housing there and people want a restaurant there, and we're pretty much 50/50 from what I hear. And I, I think, like I said, if it was just your use, go forward. So that's something I will have to think about. I'm actually kind of reassured that there's a little bit more zoning protection than I thought previously for this use. Let me see if I've got all my questions answered. Oh, yeah, if they added a second story, would that need a variance?
It would, yes. The second story would have to meet setback requirements as well. And given the fact that the existing building is non-conforming, that second-story addition would require variances as well.
Okay, so pretty much, what's there is what's there, and anything else would need variances?
To expand the building, correct.
Yeah, okay. But if it was the exact same footprint, would that still need variances? If they tore this one down and built a new one? Because it's non-conforming.
Yep. If they tore the building down and built a new one, they would have to come in for variances, yes.
Okay.
Even if it were in that same footprint.
Okay. So the other, the third part of what I'm, we've got the micro, we've got the macro, and then just a general use, and this touches on part of what Member Pierce said, and that is, this is a really odd piece of land, and with, we... And with, we keep getting proposals, and at some point, do we want to think about whether it's just better for the city to buy it? Are we going to zone it or have such zoning requirements that nobody can build anything there? And that's, that's an issue I'm thinking about. I mean, obviously it costs money and everything, but we don't want to condemn it by, through the zoning code. I wish there was a way for housing to come forward, but we haven't seen that. Like I said, in a vacuum, this is a great idea. But it's not in a vacuum. And I gotta go try your pizza. But it's not in a vacuum. It's in the real world, in a real neighborhood. And so those are my thoughts and I, I hope that that's helpful.
Appreciate it.
Member Agnew.
Thank you. So I am going to start with two questions. One, I'm going to begin with Director Teague. So when this was guided for residential, I think you mentioned, and if I'm getting my years correct, that would have been for the, in the 2008 comprehensive plan, is that correct?
I know it was in the 2008 plan. It might have even been in the plan before that, but I'm not 100% sure.
Okay, and you might not know the answer then to this question, but was it discussed, considered in the 2018 plan or was this area just not touched?
Yeah, I can say going through both the 2008 and the 2018, this site was never discussed.
Okay, thank you. I, I think that that's really helpful context for, for me, especially the amount of times we say, this is what it, you know, in the comprehensive plan is guided for. I think that that's it, it's an interesting data point, but for me, that's not the most swaying thing because we haven't looked at it. It sounds like in 15 years, minimum. So next question that I have is, how much bigger is the kitchen here? I remember some conversation about this with the planning commission. How much bigger is the kitchen here than your other site?
At our other, other site, we have our line where we cook meals and then we have a small prep room. So as far as total square footage, I don't know that off the top of my head. This would be different because everything would be in one, we'd use the garage space basically. So I would say.
Ballpark.
Thirty percent larger, like net space.
Wonderful, thank you. I, I got the impression that it was substantially larger from the planning commission, so just was seeking some clarity on that, so that's helpful.
Yeah, and, and we are in an old gas station as well currently, our stores, and, but we have seating, so it's, that takes up, the, the building itself, the footprint's bigger, but we have seating in there.
Okay, wonderful. So my, my thoughts on this, and, and I think I'm going to kind of maybe reverse the way that Member Jackson did this, is I, I fall into the camp of I would like to see a restaurant or something on this site. And the reason being, I live, I've timed it out, I can get to Town Hall Station in like 90 seconds if I really need to, including Patisserie Margaux, Snuffy's, like that whole area. And I know that there's an important distinction there, and that was a neighborhood node, right? But I was there the other night and met some neighbors who they still didn't have power 20 hours later. And I was like, oh my gosh. So we talked about that for a little while. Saw a former commission member and, and spoke with that member for a little bit. And the way that these kind of things within our community can bring people together, I love. And I, I do, I think that the first proposal that we saw here, while I think it was larger than what we want, is in some ways, I think it was called like the West Side Cafe, or maybe it was a different name. That to me was the closest to what I want to see, minus the, I think they had some rental space and some additional components. But I love the idea, and so now marrying it with what this proposal is in front of us, I love the adaptive use of the space that we have. And I think that, you know, again echoing what we see with Town Hall Station, using what is there is a very sustainable way of going about development. And I think it, it's what we know more or less fits on the site. So I'd love to see some type of restaurant, some place that people can gather together, which is I think maybe where this proposal in front of us tonight, sketch plan, doesn't quite meet the mark of what I want to see for the site. It, to me says people are going to, you know, drive in, pick up and leave. And so the part that is missing is how are we bringing people together in the community? Where are people gonna, whether, even if it is just a coffee shop similar to Patisserie Margaux or Edina Coffee Roasters, where are we encouraging that community connection that I think is so essential when adding in a restaurant or a cafe or something into a neighborhood, right? Because this isn't a neighborhood node, this is a neighborhood. And so that's where I'm really trying to strike that balance of creating something that everyone in this neighborhood, while I know we won't get, you know, a ton of support directly there, but people in this neighborhood do eventually want to walk to. And it is that community gathering spot. And so, you know, it's kind of hard to, to suss through. I would love to see this be PCD one. I'd love to see a restaurant cafe there. I want it to be something that's going to bring people to that site for a longer period of time, coffee or otherwise. And I think we were closest with that first proposal and I just want to see some tweaking on the hours, potentially no liquor license. Like I, I know that there were some aspects to that that I think we could have just trimmed down. And so to me, the fact that the planning commission did refer to this as industrial, which like we, we could argue that one way or another. But I've seen how, you know, you just get so much traffic in and out. And, and I hear what Member Pierce was saying about, you know, there's traffic on the street already and, and we can't really solve for that 100%. But that was also what I didn't like about the, the donation site either, is I was envisioning like lines of cars, like I've seen at other sites. Here, I don't want it just, you know, so much rapid traffic, but more of a, a community location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have requested that we look at the zoning map. This is the third proposal that has come before council. And with each of the proposals, we've talked about traffic and that was a very strong concern. And I remember listening to Commissioner Lou Miranda talk and he was frustrated about how this isn't, you know, we're not planning, we're reacting. And I don't know if we could zoom in, but what the area that we're looking at, that little teeny tiny red triangle is the potential site. And if you look at our code and you go to, anyone, you can Google Edina city code, go to chapter 24 Streets, Article Four, which pertains to standards and guidelines for roadways. And if you look at item seven, curb cuts on collector streets, and one thing we need to note, and maybe Director Teague, what classification is Vernon? It's a collector or an arterial, right? I can't remember which one it is. But it is identified as either a collector or arterial in our comprehensive plan.
It is, it's an arterial.
It's an arterial.
But in this case, city code doesn't apply to it because it's managed by Hennepin County.
City code does not manage, but we are.
For curb cuts, so. Hennepin County has its jurisdiction on how many curb cuts and where they're located and stuff like that for Vernon Avenue.
Right. But in our city code. And it's important to recognize that item seven curb cuts on collector streets, the number of driveways intersecting a street designated as a collector or arterial by the comprehensive plan shall be limited to those driveways essential for adequate access. When properties adjoining more than one street, driveways shall be restricted, if possible, to the street with the lower volume of traffic. And then it goes on to say, the following additional restrictions apply to lots in the R1 district and R2 districts. And if you look at that little red dotted triangle, it does appear to be surrounded by R1 and R2. Okay, there is multifamily. And R3, yes. So, but I do see a lot of R1, I do see a lot of R2. And, you know, does that meet the definition of in? I don't know. If all streets adjoining the lot, and so there are additional requirements, including on corner lots or through lots, and this is considered a through lot, it's not a corner lot. No driveway shall intersect with a street designated by the comprehensive plan as collector or arterial. Okay? And I think, you know, when you read that and you think about, you know, safety, and we have talked about traffic and we can't control the traffic and all that kind of stuff, our code offers standards and guidelines that help us direct what is safe development, what makes sense for lots. And as has been noted, my colleague, Member Jackson, this is a very, I can't remember, small unusual site, I'm paraphrasing, but I think that's the gist of it. And the question comes down, and this was also something that was wrestled with by the planning commission, what is the job of the planning commission? Our, you know, what is the job that we have before us? Is it our responsibility to make sure that there is an economically viable project, no matter how much somebody's paid for a piece of property? Is it our job to ensure safety? I think safety is definitely very important. I think the reason why it is guided for residential has to do with the idea that you want to have it be accessed off of Eden Prairie Road. And I think, you know, what we need to see come before us is a project that meets code standards. And it would be very helpful to start with a diagram that showed us what the legal buildable area for that site happens to be. And I know with the site that is most often compared to this one, 4404 Valley View Road, the development that went up was over two and a half times the legal buildable area. And what we need to do is start really thinking in terms of having developments be guided by our code and our standards, instead of flipping it around and, you know, turning it upside down and having our zoning and our comprehensive plan be guided by a development vision. There needs to be recognition of what is in place. And I think, you know, this is sort of frustrating for me. I did support the green drop, but that was before I looked at standards and guidelines for roadways and driveways. The more I look at this and I look at the area, I am very concerned about what this could do for safety. I'm concerned about spot zoning. And I really do take to heart what Commissioner Miranda said. And it, it did sound, you know, very much coming from a point of frustration that we are not planning, we are reacting. And we need to really start moving in a direction where we're following the things that have been developed. And, because this is really something that the community should be able to count on. So I'm, I'm troubled by the amount of traffic this would generate. I'm troubled by the access off of Vernon. And it just, the more I, I think about each of the projects that come before us, it, it seems like the sky's the limit. We'll, we'll rewrite our code, we'll create a whole new zoning for you, we'll do, you know, whatever you want. And, and I don't think that is the logical way to proceed. I, I really don't think that that is appropriate. I don't think it makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks, Member Ritter. Yeah, my thoughts, you know, when we looked at the restaurant idea and we had so much feedback on that, that was positive in nature. And when we decided that that wouldn't work in the form that it was suggested it be in, it was primarily because of parking. And so now, what I see you folks trying to do is react to that and, and recognizing that parking was an issue, we didn't think it was appropriate that people would be parking up in the neighborhood and walking down to the restaurant. We knew they couldn't park along Vernon, you know, county wasn't going to ever allow that. So the parking really had to be contained on the site. And so as Member Agnew points out, this notion of you looking at this piece of property and seeing an adaptive reuse possibility, just like you apparently did out in Minnetoka or Eden Prairie or somewhere, is, is pretty creative, I thought. And when somebody called me about, well, what do you think about this takeout pizza idea? I thought, well, it's, you know, it's something worth exploring because it does create some vitality. But I thought Member Agnew made a really great point is that you want, if we have something there that causes us to think about a use that we need to change the code for and we need to guide it differently, have a place where people come and stay instead of come and go is something we're thinking about. So if there were, you know, one thing I thought of when I heard about this idea was, if you wanted it to be a place where people came and stayed sometimes, you know, what if there were a second floor on it and it was used as a, an event room or a party room? Like kids, kids have a pizza party or somebody, people from the neighborhood wanted to get together and, and have a big room where they could have pizza made downstairs and brought upstairs. But I don't know what that would do in terms of parking if we added, you know, if you added another 1,200 square feet to it up on a second level. I think that's about the footprint of the main building. What'd you say was a one stall per 100 square feet?
Correct.
You need another 12 stalls. And how many do they have now?
21, I believe it is.
21? So they're overparked right now?
They are overparked, yep.
So that's at least one train of thought, is that, to me, this, this idea had possibilities based on what we heard people saying that they liked the idea of. We are also highly sensitive to the neighbors not wanting to have people parking in the neighborhood and that caused a demise to that first project, as I mentioned. Another thing that you think about is, well, if we did change it to PCD one, we just had a conversation upstairs about cannabis and we've got that coming to our town. You know, it's coming to every town in Minnesota starting the first of the year and we're going to be issuing not licenses, but registrations on at least five cannabis locations. And we're talking about, well, what zoning district should they be in? Without being too prescriptive, if we have them in the same zones where we have liquor stores and, and, you know, we, we could look at PCD one, PCD two and PCD three. So it could be a theoretical situation where down the line, if this were approved as a project and you didn't like the way it was functioning and you decided this wasn't for you, this location wasn't doing what you wanted it to do, you've got to think about the multitude of different possibilities that would be available to people wanting to come in there, including retail cannabis. If we decide at some point in time here this summer that, that we would allow the retail sale of cannabis in a PCD one zone. So, you know, when I look at the list of things that are permitted under PCD one, I see a lot of things that if they would have been there at one point in time, barber shop, beauty salon, art, art dealers, art galleries, antique shops, gift shops, you know, I think some of those things might have stood the test of time, a florist shop, you know, people might like that. But when you get into things like other things that are permitted under PCD one, like secondhand clothing stores and we don't allow liquor stores, municipally owned, only the municipally owned ones, that wouldn't be a site for us, I don't think, because we've got one close by. Medical and dental clinics, that's another possibility. So it, it causes you to think on another train of thought, well, is it more important to think about what could be than what is? But, you know, you, you, you're dealing in here and now and you've got a decent idea about pizza location. But beyond the life of the pizza, pizzeria station, then what? If it's zone PCD one? So that's something that all of us have to think about. And I can't tell you where I land on that, I just, I just know it's something I got to think about. So you're getting some kind of theoretical discussion here out of the council that's, that's different than.
We're getting feedback, that's what we're looking for is feedback.
Maybe what you expected. But I hope it's, I hope it's provided some level of guidance for you to go back and sit and.
Yeah, we'll have a conversation, well, I'll have a conversation with my client.
And conference about whether this is a good idea or not under the circumstances. Because I don't think you can get a sense from anybody up here, what, what. Because I don't think you can get a sense from anybody up here what would happen, you know?
No, we understand that it would be a contentious issue regardless, and it would not have a guarantee of passing if we brought it forward. So we'll have to talk about that. And Jake will have to decide ultimately if it's worth his, his time and effort and money to pursue it. I mean, I know he's passionate about it. He sort of loves the idea. But, but he also doesn't, I mean, he's a business man. He doesn't want to waste his money and time if he can avoid it, so.
Sure, it'd be great pizza, you know, it'd be.
It'd be fantastic pizza, I can swear to that.
Well, I think that for people on the west side to access in just a couple of minutes, you know? But this whole conversation has caused Member Pierce to think of something else he wanted to add to the conversation.
Well, no, I was just gonna kind of double down on the comment. From that side of the dais, it seemed like it is a contentious issue. And that is one way to internalize it. The way I would internalize it is that we don't know what we want to do with it. And so it is incredibly hard for a business developer, an entrepreneur, or what have you, to try to make sense of that, to bring something forward with, when there's this very, this range, maybe I put it that way, of ideas. Because I could tell you if, if one of us proposed something, I would say, there's probably two of us that would go, I don't know if I would want to do that. But we talk about it, we wrestle with it, we might come up with something that could work. And so I, it's, I think it is fair to perhaps suggest that beyond this, maybe you have some independent conversations to, I think that really is going to be the only way you can kind of tease out what might go forward. And then the other thing I would just offer, and you saw it play out, if we want to have a neighborhood note there, I don't know that you can do that in that small piece of land. And so this is where I do kind of agree with where Commissioner Miranda made the comment about planning versus reacting. A lot of what we do, it's part of the process. We do react to when things come forward, so that's not a negative thing. But on the west side, in that area, we could spend some time thinking about, all right, we want to have a neighborhood note. How do we accomplish that, given that it's, there's residential surrounding that area? And I know there had been some work that the city has done to see if there are other parcels available, that kind of a thing, to start to sketch together, maybe we could do a neighborhood note and here's what it would look like. That's work that I think, if we want that as a city, that we need to spend some work, spend some effort and dollars in trying to figure that out. And honestly, I think not until you have that or something similar to that will you have more, you're going to be comfortable moving forward, in my opinion, with spending more money to further develop an idea.
Understood.
Member Pierce mentioned something that I think is something I wanted to touch on as well, and I forgot to do it. And that is, you're faced with this situation where you've got this funky piece of property. It's almost trapezoidal, I think. It's.
Triangular, yes.
Yeah, it's, and then it's guided medium density for residential, but it's been an out of a pair place for 50 years. And, and as Member Pierce says, we're, we don't know what we want to do with it either. And it's confounded us as well. So thanks for trying to come up with an idea. And this notion of planning versus reacting, I mean, to me, you know, we were, I guess, the first city in the metro to have a planning department. And so you get your city set with these different zoning districts, but then you've got, you've got exceptions to the rule. It's just like everything else. I mean, you're reacting to situations, so I don't agree with what I heard on planning versus reacting. It's inevitable that you're going to have to react because sometimes you have to go outside the box a little bit. That's why the variances exist as a legal concept and principle. You know, you've got the general rule and then you've got exceptions to the general rule. When are you going to make an exception to the general rule? Well, that's why they exist in every zoning district. And so, you know, we might face that situation here. Member Ruster mentioned one we faced over on Valley View that was a funky triangular piece of property and, and more townhouses are on there than she thinks are appropriate. But I think it looks good, you know? But you've got different opinions for different folks. So I don't know where that leads you. You just have to kind of huddle with your team on your side.
We'll talk it through.
And talk to our folks.
Yeah, we'll be talking to Terry as well.
They can sometimes tease out of our conversations things that, that we didn't detect ourselves.
Yeah, he can expect my fault tomorrow.
Member Pierce's comment. And visiting with council members one off is certainly something that's permitted as well.
Well, thank you. I mean, I do genuinely appreciate the feedback that you've all given us tonight. This is real feedback that allows us to make decisions based on the best sort of information that we have. It's better than a smokescreen. It's better than a, well, maybe, you know, maybe, you know, try and see. So this gives us something to work with. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm going to go out and try your pizza, too.
Appreciate that.
All right, thanks for, as I said, thanks for coming in with this idea. Okay. And now we're going to turn to Manager Neil and Councilmember Jackson, who is this relentless, tireless worker on commission appointments, in this case, it's student commission appointments. And we're going to go through the list and we're going to have a motion on the approval of student commissioners for the upcoming school year. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Each year, the City Council appoints students to boards and commission members so they have an experience of what it's like to serve their community and, and see kind of city government from the inside. This year, councilmembers Jackson and Agnew were the interviewers of 13 applicants, 12 of which were appointed to our boards and commissions. Those terms begin on September 1st, 2024 and end on September 1st, 2025.
Let me thank Member Agnew, too, for doing this work. For missing that mention earlier, so thanks to both of you for doing these interviews. All right, who's taking the lead on the conversation?
I was going to take the lead.
All right.
And, and start out by saying I had a new partner this year. It was awesome. Member Agnew joined me. And I think, you know, I just want to make it clear that we had 13 applicants, one of whom did not come to the interview. So I think they kind of lost interest. I don't want to sound like, you know, that everybody we talked to was awesome. And that's the point I want to make. And one, we didn't get a chance to meet. So I'm sure they're awesome, too, but they're not on this list because we didn't get a chance to meet them. So 13 engaged, engaging students. Again, the theme this year was very much around public health again. The students having been through school during a pandemic are aware of the world of public health. I think every one of them were happy with, we were able to place them where they wanted to be. And, and it was just a wonderful experience and a wonderful chance to meet them. And I want to see if Member Agnew has some comments.
The only thing that I want to add, other than being immensely impressed with the students that we have within our community, is I think also the reminder to us as a council that we should take some time over the next year to think strategically of how do we want to evolve and use the student commissioners in this role and in this capacity? Because I do think that, similar to some of the conversations that we've had about our commissions and what we expect of them, I think that we could tighten up a little bit about what we want from our commission members. So that's maybe just a call of action for all of us. But I think at the end of the day, I left every interview that we were able to conduct just thoroughly impressed and I think left with a smile on my face of like, hey, this is our next generation and this is pretty cool. So with that, I hand it back to you.
All right, thank you. And so, yeah, I just want to encourage our commission chairs to spend a little time eliciting feedback from the students because they really do have a different perspective. And I found on the Energy and Environment Commission a priceless perspective. So I hope that they, we expect them to be full members, not voting, but otherwise full members. And I encourage our chairs to think of them that way. So drum roll, please. This is our fantastic slate of student commissioners. For the Arts and Culture Commission, Anna Schenk. For Community Health Commission, Anushka Ja and Edita Gandhi. For the Energy and Environment Commission, Anushka Srivasta and Angela Landsweert. We didn't have any historians this time, so we don't have any student commissioners for that, for the Heritage Preservation Commission. For Human Rights and Relations Commissions, we have Ellie Dosach and Pranika Kumar. For Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Suliman Sayed and Emma Ellertson. For the Planning Commission, we have Edita Ja and Ben Jankis. And for the Transportation Commission, Augie Lessing. And I can tell you, every single one of them was amazing. Don't see Mr. Teague, but both of the students who we put on the Planning Commission promised that they liked hard work. So, oh, there you are. So hopefully they're, they're hard workers for you. And we told them it's twice a month, it's not once a month, and they were up for that. So I was really, really pleased with that. So with that, I will move this slate of 2024, 2025 student commission appointments.
Did you tell when they start and when they end?
Oh, yeah. Their term begins in September. They've got training in August and then their term begins in September. We hope that they continue to serve throughout the summer because it is a year-long term.
And I'll second the motion.
Very good. We've got a motion in a second to adopt the recommended appointments that Member Jackson read with terms starting September 1st, 2024, ending September 1st, 2025, for the various commissions named and the various students named. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the recommended appointments by our colleagues for the student appointments to the various commissions named, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The students are appointed. Thank you. Is, let me ask you a quick question on human rights and relations. It's Ellie Dosach, not DoScotch? Or is it Matt DoScotch's?
I think it is.
The typographical?
I think it might be a typo.
Is that a typo?
I think it might be a typo.
So it's Ellie DoScotch? It's Matt DoScotch's daughter, apparently? Or is it?
I think that's correct, yeah, yeah.
It was also on one of our commissions. All right, very good. Nothing's come in, I take it? Kirk Ellison? All right. And turning now to our manager for his manager's comments.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one thing for you tonight. I just wanted to give the council an update on the settlement of the National Opioids Official Settlement. One aspect of that that involves the Sackler family and their, and their corporate organization, I think it's been sidelined for, for the time being. But a couple other mass lawsuits that are, that have settled out now, one of them's with pharmacies, retail pharmacies. And we got settlements today for, from Walmart, Walgreens, and CVS, a total of $65,000.
Interesting.
That's all that I got. Thank you.
Okay. Member Ruster, you want to lead us off and?
Sure.
Tell us about some of the comments you got from residents when you, we ran into you as you were walking, we were all walking to the parade.
Yes, I went to the Fourth of July Parade. Before the parade, I always like to go and talk to people and it's nice. I sort of checked the pulse, asked if people have joys and concerns and got some both positive feedback and some constructive ideas about what we're doing. And so that was really nice. And then it was kind of rainy, but, you know, it was all lovely. I also went to the League of Minnesota Cities meeting in Rochester and that was really valuable, I think, in terms of providing opportunities to talk to people from cities throughout Minnesota. It's always good to have time to meet and chat and find out what people are doing in different ways they are negotiating through things. And so that was good. I went to sessions that had to do with affordable housing, cannabis. There was a lot that was there for me to learn about. And so that was really kind of neat and staff members were there as well. So it was a good event. On another note, I have been hearing from a lot of people about tree limbs after the storm. And I think probably all of us are getting emails and voicemail messages. And I remember several years ago, I think the city did pick up limbs. I have, I recall that.
We may have picked up limbs if they were from public property or there was a tree that was on public property that fell. But we have not picked up private property storm debris before.
Okay, all right. I did get a.
Oh, sorry. Member Pierce, just to follow up on that. I thought we had coordinated where people could bring limbs to a location.
We have done that before.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about. I don't know if Member Jackson.
Well, I have an ancient memory that predates Manager Neil, where we had a, I don't know when the wind comes straight down. Or it was either straight, it was straight line winds and it hit the east, it hit Richfield really hard. Mr. Mayor, you'll remember this, that hit Richfield very hard in Eastern Edina. Hit Western Edina, too, where I live, and I, we lost limbs, but Eastern Edina got the limbs picked up because it was so severe and Western Edina did not. But that was before 2011, so.
And this could have been before. But I have a distinct memory of the city picking up limbs from my yard. I'm pretty sure it happened, yeah. But this raised a question. Somebody's on a road that, on the opposite side of the street of St. Louis Park, and they came through and picked up limbs and then Edina did not pick up limbs. And I'm just wondering if other municipalities are doing that? If we're sort of unique or not? And I know that's not really fair to ask this right now without giving you advanced warning.
Yeah, I think, Members and Member Ruster, I think we have seen, we have seen, certainly different cities have different procedures when it comes to storm cleanup. We, we require residents to handle their own tree and, and storm debris in that way. I know that St. Louis Park has a more permissive approach to that and, and do provide assistance for some, for some cases where they have private tree damage. And we have not done that in the past.
This was specific to boulevard trees. Thank you for that.
Okay, good. Anything else, Members?
No, I think that's all.
Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's been a while since we've been together, you know? I think it was.
It has been.
Or middle of June.
So lots been going on. We had an event at the Centennial Lakes that got together five panelists of people who had helped plan that historic development. And if you missed it, it's available on Edina TV and it's, it's a great story. And they, they were really interesting fellows, talking about the process. I do want to thank the Explore Minnesota and the Edina Community Foundation for hosting the parade. It was, it was rainy until it was not. And then suddenly there was a big crowd and it was a great parade. So I want to say thanks for that. And I think that's all I've got.
Great, thank you. Member Pierce.
Nothing from me this evening. Thank you.
All right. Member Agnew.
So over our summer break, is what we call it when we have that one meeting off, I have just been enjoying all the amazing city things with my girls. So I have a three and a half year old and a four, three year old and a four and a half year old. I don't know, they're so close together. And so first, I don't remember the exact order of this, but we went to the retirement celebration for Grif. And it was at Centennial Lakes Park and it was a beautiful sight for it. It was an amazing event. But the whole time, those darn boats go up and down the waterway. And so my girls are just like, when are you going to take us rowing? So now I have to do that, which will be actually a lot of fun. But of course, they want the swan. And then the parade. Parade was amazing. We've already had some comments on that, which was, was really a good time. And then lastly, I've gotten to enjoy the Aquatic Center. So just another plug for that, especially on those hot days. Absolutely love that we have that and excited that we, as a council, were also able to go and do a tour, our capital improvement project tour. And. capital improvement project tour, and got to, I don't know, I really liked the behind-the-scenes tour of the aquatic center in particular. But I think just a good reminder of everyone that wants to stay cool and enjoy some of the amazing amenities that our city has. And then this is kind of embarrassing, but I walked the Roslin Park Trail for the first time on Sunday, because apparently I can walk there from my house, and it was a 45-minute loop, and it was beautiful and amazing. And so if you haven't gotten out to do that trail yet, which I've lived in walking distance from for six years, and just got out there this year for the first time. But I wanted to go across that bridge, and so kind of used it as an opportunity to just think about all of some of the amazing projects we have that I think are going to make other amazing things that we have as part of the city even more accessible. So just a reminder for folks to enjoy all of our amazing summer things. Thank you.
Thanks. I want to give Member Jackson a big shout-out for that centennial, History of Centennial Lakes event. It was her brainchild, put it together, the panelists, former mayor Fred Richards, and one of the developers, Peter Jarvis, John Breitling, who I think worked for one of the real estate development companies. And there was a fourth, was there one more panelist?
Well, Tom Shirley.
Well, Tom Shirley was there because he ran, he was the first manager of the park.
And Gordon Hughes.
And then Gordon Hughes, who was a planning director at the time, I think, that Centennial Lakes was created, and back in the mid-'80s. And they talked about the difficulties involved and the challenges around, you know, we think, we go through these periods where there are financial challenges. They had them there, too, at that point in time. And here we are, all these years later, with a fabulous park, and loved by all. And then the parade, you know, my wife is an introvert, and for her to get in the back seat of a convertible and sit up on the back and wave at people is, that's about as tough as it gets for her, really, really hard. But her comment was, the people were so kind and so nice and so friendly, even though it was, somebody pointed out, like, Member Jackson, that it had stopped raining for the parade itself. And the people were just wonderful. And as always, it's just a great piece of America. It makes you really feel good about everything, where you live, everything about being here and being in Edina. It was a wonderful, wonderful morning. We had our last meeting, I think it was on the 18th of June. And then on the 20th of June, I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting. And as we're sitting here, I realize, well, I haven't even reported out on that thing yet. So but just, briefly, I can tell you a few highlights of the standing committee that I chaired on transportation. We had a significant meeting there, had U.S. DOT people there, and then all my vice chairs, the mayor of Austin, Texas, the mayor of Normal, Illinois, who's on the Amtrak board, and mayor of Gresham, Oregon, who's our transit person. They all gave a great report out on the things that they're working on. And then the next day, I was on a panel, the Bloomberg Philanthropies, Michael Bloomberg is, all those years as mayor, really committed himself, he really committed himself to local government and local government work. And so he helped fund this local infrastructure hub. And then they had a panel, and the local infrastructure hub of Bloomberg helps cities like ours process applications under, you know, the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act, IRA. So we had a really good panel discussion there. And then the president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, the last president, Hillary Sheevey, who's the mayor of Reno, asked me to be on the nominating committee. So that was a really interesting experience for the first time, putting in place in the queue for the next few years, a leadership team. So this, it's now the mayor of Columbus, Ohio. He was in the queue and ready to go. And then it's David Holt, the mayor of Oklahoma City. And they tried to go party-party independent, party-party independent. So, and then the one, the last one in the queue now is the mayor of San Diego, who will be the first gay mayor to lead the U.S. Conference of Mayors three years from now. So that was a really interesting experience as well, with about a dozen people on that committee. And then some other fabulous meetings, you know, meetings on what we're seeing in our world. And we even see a little bit of it locally about misinformation and disinformation. That was, there were some good conversations around that. And I'll report out on some of the other things at a later time, but that's, I think it's good for now. Member Jackson.
Yes, at some point, I'd love to hear the trends in transportation. That'd be really helpful.
Now, we got a really fascinating report out of Amtrak. They're at all-time record highs for ridership.
Wow.
So you can see that passenger rail is coming back, and now it's a matter of trying to develop, I think, more effective systems, like the new Borealis line between here and Chicago is more of a, not cut rate, but it's a more affordable sort of way to get down to Chicago than the Empire Builder, which is, you know, the fancy train with, it costs probably twice as much.
Dale Livia does that, does the train, yeah.
And so Chris Kous, who's the mayor of Normal, Illinois, who's now new to the Amtrak board, is, they're pretty pleased with how things are going, especially up and down the East Coast, people using the train. So, yeah, I'll do that. So that's it, that's it for me. It caused anybody else to think of anything that happened over the last, since the June 18th, when we last got together. Okay. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. Motion by Member Jackson, a second by Member Pierce to adjourn the meeting of the city council this Tuesday, July 16th, 2024. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We stand adjourned.